Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, August 11 meeting of the Attleboro School Committee. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. We will start tonight with our superintendent's report, and for that I will turn it over to Superintendent Sawyer.
Thank you, Chairman. Want to notify the committee that my Friday updates will resume on Friday, the 28th, so you can look forward to that, I'm sure. I have a few updates for you this evening to hold you over until such time. The first is that, with one exception, all of our administrative vacancies are filled. Feel good about where we stand on that. The one vacancy is in CTE. As you know, Jeremy left, and Anne is stepping up in what is her last year to act as the interim director, to help us through the transition. That leaves her position vacant, and we decided that we didn't want to take action at the beginning of the summer because we wanted things to settle in a bit. And now that we had a little bit of time to think about it, the decision that the high school made was to actually post, to see if there was somebody out there perhaps that was interested and could come and help us this year, and someone that we could build around in that capacity. But if such a person doesn't exist, we're going to not fill the position and go in a different direction for the remainder of this year with the idea that we'll be posting for her eventual replacement in February, and, you know, perhaps that person will be the person who wants to figure out exactly the full team. So just kind of taking a look at that and see what's out there, and that's the plan on that, if anyone noticed that vacancy. But other than that, the administration is ready for the start of the year, and I believe we have a few introductions left to make for you that we will make in September at our September meeting. We'll have everybody introduced at that time. A couple of things have happened since we were last together. I wanted to give you a brief update on the Supreme Court case that certainly has gotten some attention and has implications for the district. Mahmoud versus Taylor received a ruling from the Supreme Court back on June 27th. It relates to the rights of parents to opt out of the curriculum based on religious concerns. I know that in some districts this has been a point of concern, but when we took a careful look at it, we felt like this was not a particular challenge for the Attleboro Public Schools. We have proposed Handbook Language, which I believe you'll be considering later this evening, but that language really just explicitly makes us compliant in a practice that we have always had in my entire time in this school district. We have always worked with families who had concerns about the way that their personal beliefs might come up against what we're teaching in the classroom. We also take pride in the fact that we are not running a district that is promoting any sort of political ideology. So, you know, I don't think we run into the same kind of problems that perhaps some other places do, and we feel that this ruling does not pose a significant change to the way that we do business here in Attleboro.
Any questions from the committee or comments?
Another brief moment of excitement this summer was that on June 30th, the Department of Education notified us that they were withholding $6.8 billion nationally from some of the funds that were supposed to be distributed to states for the different title programs. That was $107 million that was withheld from Massachusetts at that time, and here locally the impact was $325,000, give or take. It's a rough estimate of what it was. That affected programs theoretically in titles two, three, and four, things like our mentoring program, professional development across the district, supports for our Yale students, and some tutoring programs are some of the broad ways that those that money had been allocated in those grants. We received pretty confident messaging from the start that whatever was behind the decision to withhold that money, that it couldn't possibly be upheld, and to not worry about it and to go ahead and only really take any sort of action if the situation prolonged past the summer. So we did not make any particular moves at that time. We moved some funds around internally to cover the absence of those funds at that time, and as predicted, the money was released on July 25th. So all that money has been released, and our plans can go ahead. It certainly, you know, gives us a pause and makes us wonder about how funding will be handled in the next fiscal year, but as this one had already been approved by Congress, again, we were assured that it would be coming and didn't do anything other than just show a little bit of patience in letting that work itself out. So I know there was some concern locally about how that was going to impact the district. People who reached out to ask about it, I assured them that we were taking steps to handle it in the short term and that we expected it to be resolved in the long term, and that is exactly how that played out.
Any questions or comments?
And then finally, you know, we are well underway in our preparations for the new school year. For anyone at home that isn't quite aware or is perhaps avoiding figuring it out, the first day of school will be Tuesday, September 2nd, and we are quite busy already in preparing for that. We are in our second week of meetings at administration. Our clerks returned to work last Wednesday. The administration has been busy receiving trainings on items like 504s, some supervisory issues. We learned about anticipated changes from the state for next year on restraints and what these days is called timeouts, but next year will be called seclusion. So lots of technical training, but most of our time has been spent on working together as an administrative team on how we're going to implement the committee's new strategic plan, and especially how we're going to take the steps this year in its focus on improving high-quality instruction in the district. So we're very excited about our plans for the year and look forward to the return of our educators so that we can get them up to speed in anticipation of the return of students again on November 2nd.
I will say, having been in here the last few weeks during the day, we always hear that this is a year-round operation, even though the students are only here nine months, but these buildings are very active in the summer months, whether it's through the through different student programs or all the staff and planning that's going on. So great to see. Any comments, questions?
We will have our normal opening report at our next meeting, in which we will give you all the details on exactly what transpired this summer and, you know, all the work that went into the start of the school. So we'll be ready at that time to do that, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. I do. I didn't have questions about Dave's report, but I had some questions in general, and I didn't know if there'd be an opportunity, and since Mr. Fertato is here. I know we have, as every summer, we always have a lot of infrastructure and facilities work going on across the district. There's several projects that were kind of, you know, pending for the year, and some other stuff have come up, and particularly I was looking at like the Thatcher AC unit and the parking lot projects, if we could just get an update as to where those items stand. I know that we'll have more updates as we open the school year, but some of this work was planned for the...
Good time for this. Mr. Fertato has to join us anyways. He has some exciting utility business to do. We always enjoy that.
I was about to invite Mr. Fertato up to discuss a couple of things.
I'm sure he'd be happy to provide a preview of his facilities report.
Okay.
Good evening. Regarding Scott's questions, I we didn't get very far with paving any of the facilities because of the first thing you mentioned, the Thatcher AC was a catastrophic failure of the newly installed AC unit in the building. So we've done a few things in that regard. We did a formal test, some exotic AC tests, to fundamentally determine what happened without opening up the unit itself. And what happened was 14 pipes internal to the unit burst. The only way that happens is through a collection of water, which is not supposed to be in the unit during the winter, which expands and collapses the pipes. It's not conceptually much different than blowing a head gasket. So, you know, in a head gasket, you get oil and water mixed in your engine, and bad things happen all over the place. This is, you know, coolant and water mixing, which, you know, essentially wrecks the internal operation of the unit fundamentally. So we had to go through a series of discussions on what could possibly cause that. The manufacturer has a very specific cause in mind. We're not at all comfortable with their interpretation of what happened. We've talked to the city about submitting a insurance claim, which would trigger a further investigation. You know, I'm not an engineer. You wouldn't want me to be in charge of this, but they'd bring formal expertise to the question and conduct an investigation as to what could possibly have happened in terms of assigning liability. That has not been done yet. Train has proposed a cost for their replacement system. They've also proposed a cost for repair. Repair does not make any sense at all because you don't get any warranties with the work, and it could blow up when we click the switch the very next time. So we've also solicited what you'd call budget numbers from other cooling tower suppliers. So we've got a fairly narrow range, so we're very comfortable with the idea of how much this is going to cost. Now it's just a question of assigning liability, and we're going to probably employ the help of our liability insurance company to determine that. It's been a process. It's been a difficult process.
What how do we feel about opening Thatcher this year, as you know, September can be pretty hot?
Yeah, so can June and July. So we did an emergency procurement of a rental tower, which has been on site since the last week in May. In addition to actually wanting to use the building, right, if we hadn't done that, using the building in June could have been a risk in terms of the ability to be comfortable in the building, but also, aside from the student and staff perspective, maintaining control of the building through the summer environmentally, you know, would have prevented it from becoming a rainforest, so.
And I do recall we were we last met for infrastructure in May. That was in progress. I just meant we're keeping that in place until...
Through the cooling season, yes.
Through the cooling season.
And we hope to have a new unit installed before December.
Thank you. Any other summer project-related questions for Mr. Fertato?
All right.
The other the other big work, if you happen to be in the neighborhood, is at Brennan Mopsetta Studly and Willett. We spent nearly, you know, $300,000 in new carpeting in those buildings. So they they look very different on that front.
Thank you, Mr. Fertato. I see we have a motion for NRG. Would you like are you prepared to speak on that?
Sure.
All right. So I'll so I'll pull the motion. I'll go ahead and do the motion then. I will entertain a motion to approve a three-year extension of our electricity contract with NRG for 12.365 cents per kilowatt hour, covering December 16, 2026 through December 15, 2029.
I'm moved.
Second.
All right. So we'll start with you, Mr. Fertato.
Sure. So I was very hot at work one day, as I usually am, contemplating sort of the global trends in energy and, you know, had sort of a light bulb moment where I sat there and said, holy crap, we're in trouble, right? I mean...
Was it a high-efficiency light bulb?
It was a very high-efficiency light bulb. It's still working at my advanced stage. But but, you know, I sat there and said to myself, holy, you know, we have just we our federal government has just essentially destroyed the renewable energy market, which implies about a quarter of our electricity in this country every day and is, at this point, significantly the cheapest method of producing energy in the country. Blowing that up at a time when there's all this talk about AI centers and mining Bitcoin and data centers that are going to draw enormous volumes of electricity, in my days of being an economist, suggests that prices are going to go up. And so I called I called our supplier and had a conversation, and he was about to call me to indicate that we had a little tiny window to execute an extension of our current agreement by three years, which would begin in December of '26. That would result in a very modest reduction in price, the district probably $60,000 or $70,000 a year, as opposed to what is very likely going to happen, you know, the realization of a significant increase in price at that in that window. So, you know, I thought we had about 18 months of, you know, the collapse of the solar industry to go through, and then another three years of, you know, restructuring that business to make it viable in the new world. And other than that, it's going to be very, very difficult to imagine a time when rates will be where they are now. So I thought it'd be prudent to go out and grab some more contract time while we can, and, you know, at that point, you can do what you're going to do. That'd be '29, December of '29.
Any questions, Mr. Storrs?
Yeah, thank you. We talked about it, but I saw on page four or five, it lists all the different schools, and Finnberg was still being listed. That's either an admin error or just a carryover from the past, so I'm...
It's a carryover from the past. NRG has been supplying our electricity probably for close to 20 years now.
And again, Finnberg only is listed at 3,400 kilowatt hours a year, so it's really on the low compared to everything else. But I just figured I'd point that out so it could be fixed.
Sure, yeah, we'll clean that up.
Thank you, Mitch.
And again, I just want to say, you know, any time that we can save on any of our utilities, good job. So thank you.
Well, you know, again, you have to believe that after December 26, the market will be in a pretty ugly place. I happen to, but the crystal ball may say something different.
Mr. Bennett?
I assume if you ask them for five years, they'd say no?
No, they would not say no. Five years is a completely different process. We'd have to go before the council and but I can certainly get five-year pricing if you'd like, and if it's not below this, we would...
I'm just curious, and I don't mean to tell you how to do your job or anything of the sort. I just wanted to I'm just curious whether the whether we could continue to extend our low pricing, but I don't want to miss since you wait since if we don't move on this tonight, from your memo, it sounds like it'll continue to go up.
Yeah, well, the thinking is the year after '29, we would have a new federal government. Who knows? And the renewables will probably be back on their feet, probably at that point, but the period in between then and now is going to be pretty messy.
I admire your optimism.
But even even procedurally, that would have to be a three-year with two additional years, correct?
I know, it could be five years, but the council would have to give approval to enter into a five-year agreement.
I don't think that's necessary personally.
Mr. Storrs?
Thank you. I understand if we go a full five years, it's got to go before the council, but I know we've done the three plus two one-year extensions, which I believe that's still can be done here? Now that has to even with the...
Even with that special language, yes, it still has to go to the council.
Because the intent would be that it would be it would go beyond that three, so.
Mr. DeMannage?
Thank you. Just going off of what Mr. Bennett and Mr. Storrs have started asking, what is the window of time for this? Being like if we approve this tonight and you could go forward, could you do you still have time with which to ask about the five years and if it came back, like, oh, we could get it even better rate going five, then we could do a motion to, I don't know, reconsider?
So for what it's worth, when I when the light did go off, it was about a week and a half ago, the price was a tenth lower. So this this is accelerating, you know, you know, in life, a tenth of a cent isn't isn't going to restructure your finances, but when you're talking about a million six a year, a tenth of a cent matters. So there's nobody that I've been able to speak to that suggests there's going to be a lull in the market before 2029.
No, I agree. If anything, they're probably going to, on average, anywhere from 3% to 5% increase year over year, so.
Maybe month by month.
Maybe, maybe. So that $60,000 realized might be for year one. It could be it could be greater in the next couple of years. So obviously, I'm in agreement with with savings.
But we can pull we can pull numbers in a day, and if it's below this, we would certainly, you know, you could say, exercise it, and if it's not below this, we'd stay with this. That'd be okay.
But the but ideally, we would approve this tonight just so we have this rate to avoid any increases down the road.
Or conditionally approve it based on the fact that a five year isn't less.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I'm actually surprised that they gave you this number because, to a certain extent, this is a four-year contract because it's we still have we still have very competitive pricing.
We'll be 13 through '26 and then 12 for the next three years.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I mean, we're still in '25.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and...
It's 15 months away.
Right. So, I mean, looking at this pricing that they're going to hold through '29.
Yeah.
I mean, I I'm surprised they gave it to us.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Oh, I completely understand why.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Mr. DeMannage?
Yeah, just one last follow-up, and I know I had only said I was going to ask about the AC and the parking, but since this is brought up, do we have an update on where our beautiful solar canopy out in this parking lot is? Because every little bit helps, right? We still waiting on national grid at this point?
Yeah, that's going to be 5% of our demand here. So, yeah, I think the last I heard, Griffin had the equipment in their warehouse. So I think the equipment is here. Almost positive it's not installed yet. And then once it is installed, I think there's a there's still a process, and it's, you know, an end-grid process that needs to be gone through. So, yeah, I, you know, I think back in April or so, I said, well...
We're still on target.
I think that's still, yeah.
Okay.
It's still work.
Thank you. Any other energy questions for Mr. Fertato? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve a three-year extension to the contract for 12.365 cents per kilowatt from December 2026 to December 2029. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Mr. Fertato, before you escape, I know we got an updated agenda, but I thought the the request from the city was on here. So so before you go, late last week, the city submitted a facility request to the school district related to the July 4th celebration next year, as it will be the United States' 250th birthday. The request was in relation to use of fields and parking here at the high school. And the and the request, it was the typical facility use application form, but the city has requested that the school department waive the $250 usage fee for that celebration. I apologize, I was out of town this weekend, so I did not get forward the facility agreement when it came through. So if if someone is comfortable making the motion for us to vote on it tonight, we can do that. If you all would like to wait to review the application yourself, we can pause, and I can forward that out for our first meeting in September.
$250?
Yes, it's it would be a $250. Mr. Larson?
I entertain a motion or I'll make a motion to waive the $250 fee for the city to use facilities next Fourth of July for the 250th celebration.
Second.
I'm moved. But, yeah, we got we got the motion.
At it all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any questions or discussions?
Can you verify which fields we're talking about?
Yep. So all the fields they're going to use, they are going to use in the context of having people on them.
So so the ones on this side of the building as well as this side?
I think I think the ones on this side of the building, they call a soccer field, will be used to deploy the fireworks.
That's what I was wondering, and and the fields will be protected, that that field will be protected because whenever we got fireworks going off, that's the only concern I had. Okay.
I believe they nowadays launch them from a platform as opposed to...
It will be on the ground.
Okay. I should clarify to your point, Mr. Storrs. The request was for access to the turf field and track, the concession, the bathrooms and the concession stand, and for use of the lights. This was this came from the mayor after her consultation with Chief Agnew and Chief Lechance about the the most effective and safest way to...
It sounds like that's for viewing for the public.
Yes.
But it sounds like we'll be using these fields as well for the actual fireworks.
Right. Yep.
That's I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Bennett?
Is there a concern over the traffic or the people all over the Astro turf fields? I know that when they first opened those field turf fields, they were really, really picky about, don't put Gatorade in your hand when you walk on there or whatnot. And I noticed like recently that seems to have not been as much of a concern, but I know those that particular field, the football field, is nearing the end of its life, so it may not be as big of a deal. But I know the field over by Brennan is fairly new. I just want to make sure that, you know, if there's thousands of people tramping around, that there's no that that's not a technical concern for the quality of the fields. I love the idea of having the fireworks here. I just want to make sure that we're safe.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I genuinely appreciate, you know, getting a year's notice, right? It gives us a lot of time to communicate and coordinate and make sure that the right things are done. So I, you know, I think that we'll be fine in that regard.
Any other questions or comments regarding waiving the facility use fee? Mr. Frappier?
Just for the Fourth of July, is there any other days?
Actually, July 3rd, I think. It's a Friday.
Yes, yeah, the, the event is happening July 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Fratato. And you already, you already concluded, your vote. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the minutes from our June 16th and June 18th meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
You're moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or edits for either set? As a reminder, the 16th was a regular meeting and the 18th was simply to pass the finalized budget number for FY '26. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. When we go a couple of months without meeting, we get a lot of donations and things we need to approve in the consent agenda. So the consent agenda has 18 items. I will entertain a motion to approve all of them unless there is any concern or anyone feels like any item should be taken separately. Seeing, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept a donation of the following items from resident Garrett Dubois. 11 60-foot XLR cables at $8 each, 3 20-foot XLR cables at $8 each, 8 HDMI to VGA adapters at $1 each, 1 VGA to DVI adapter at $1 each, 1 Mini to VGA at $1 each for a total value of $120. Motion to accept a donation of 250 backpacks with an estimated value of $1,000 from the Mooney family on behalf of their children, Benjamin and Harrison, who currently attend elementary, Studley Elementary School. Motion to accept a donation from Tavern in the Square for Skills USA in the amount of Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $10,000 from the Studley PTO to be used at the discretion of the principal. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Feinstein Foundation to the Studley Elementary School Gifts Donations Line. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Feinstein Foundation to Hill Roberts Gifts Donation Line. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $400 from Charities Aid Foundation America to the Thatcher Elementary School Gifts Donation Line. Motion to accept a contractual obligation in the amount of $55.35 from Planet Aid as broken down in the check receipt dated June 12th, 2025. Motion to accept a contractual obligation in the amount of $37 from Planet Aid as broken down in the check receipt dated July 17th, 2025. Motion to accept the April 2025 contractual obligation in the amount of $78.90 from Bay State Textiles to Hill Roberts Elementary School. Motion to accept the May 2025 contractual obligation in the amount of $54.90 from Bay State Textiles to Hill Roberts Elementary School. Motion to accept the donation from Commonwealth Corporation Foundation of Equipment, Training Services, and Staff Stipends to support the Attleboro Technical Institute HVAC program totaling $59,540. Motion to declare the itemized list of Willett Elementary School everyday math books as surplus as presented. Motion to declare the itemized list of Thatcher Elementary School everyday math books as surplus as presented. Motion to declare the following vehicle as surplus. 2013 Ford E-Series van, as it has been deemed undrivable as described in the Director of Operations memorandum. Motion to send to the municipal council for prior year invoices in the amount of $28,414.28 as broken down in the July 22nd memorandum from the finance director. Motion to send to the municipal council for approval prior year invoices in the amount of $2,572.50 as broken down in the July 24th memorandum from the finance director. Motion to send to the municipal council for approval prior year invoice in the amount of $2,200 as broken down in the August 11th memorandum from the finance director.
You're moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Mr. Domenici?
A couple of quick comments. Just thank you to the Harrison family, the 250 backpacks is a significant donation as well as the Studley PTO. It's always great to see the PTOs bringing that kind of funding back into the schools and, you know, it's been in the news recently, so congratulations to everybody that was involved with the significant grant that was awarded for the Attleboro Technical Institute. Expanding the program offerings from four programs to seven is significant. And I was reminded of that, seeing a further donation of nearly $60,000 to help with the HVAC, so. I love seeing that program continue to grow and I hope it continues to grow for years to come.
Thank you, Mr. Domenici. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the update from our Policy and Personnel Subcommittee from their August 4th meeting, and for that I will turn it over to Subcommittee Chair Storrs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, so the Policy and Personnel Subcommittee met August 4th, last Monday. We continue to focus on our annual review of our policies, focusing mostly on Section E. We have the following, all of these policy recommendations came out unanimous. I'll take them in groups and as always, I'll ask if anybody wants any one to be taken separately. So the first grouping that we have is a motion to remove policy BDC, appointed committee officials, as well as policy exhibit BDFA-E2, conduct of school council business from the policy binder, as MASC does not have these and it's, it's covered by law as well as procedural. Does anybody want me to take either of them separately? Seeing none, again, all of these motions came out of the committee unanimous, so I'm going to put them right up for discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Next section. Motion to note the review date of policy BEC, executive sessions, EBAB, pest management policy, EBB, first aid, EBC, emergency plans, EC, building and grounds management, ECA, building and ground security, ECAC, vandalism, EEAE, school bus safety program, EEAEA, bus driver examination and training, EEAEB, drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers, EEAJ, motor vehicles idling on school grounds. Again, these all align with MASC, so we're just looking to note the review date that we went through the process. Does anybody want me to take any of them separately? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those all passed unanimous. Next, this is a motion to make mostly minor edits to align our policies with MASC's policies. BDFA, school councils, BDFA-E1, which, hold on, BD, uh, school improvement plans, it was missing from the, ECAF, security cameras in schools, and EDC, authorized use of school-owned Does anybody want me to take any of those separately? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Great. Next section, motion to approve the edits to policy, the following policies. Policy EB, safety program, EBCD, emergency closing, EEAG, student transportation in private vehicles, EEAECR1, rules for riding the school bus, GCGE1, substitute pay rates, and GDD, staff vacations and holidays. I do know that JFA is listed, that's the enrollment of non-resident staff policy, but I believe that's coming back to us. Did we make a decision on that one?
I thought we were moving forward, as is, and we were going to bring it up.
Okay, that's what, okay, so, and, and policy JFA, enrollment of non-resident staff Does anybody want me to take any of those up separately? Seeing none, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Next section, motion to approve the following job descriptions as presented. Long-term substitute teacher, K through 12, substitute teacher, K through 12, and staff coverage specialist, K through 12. Anybody want to take those separately? Seeing none, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. And lastly, we always make some edits over the summer for our student handbooks, so some edits due to some changes in laws and some other things. I'll have the administration, if you could, just give a quick little summary of what, of what the changes are.
Sure. As Superintendent Sawyer mentioned before, there was a Supreme Court case that recently ruled, and so in order to ensure our accordance with that, we added some language to our handbook for families related specifically to that. We also took a closer look at our, for the middle schools, our tardiness chart and our attendance chart and made some minor changes to both of those, just to ensure that they were a little bit more streamlined and in line with what we currently do in each of the schools.
And the changes were provided to the members in the packet, so I'll put that up for discussion. Is there any discussion on the changes to the policy handbooks? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is scheduled for September 8th, and that concludes my report.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Storrs. The agenda lists executive session as next, but before that, I'll add in open forum. Is there anyone that would like to address the committee as part of open forum? Seeing none, I will close open forum. Reminders of upcoming dates, August 26th is the opening for the educators in the district. Freshman orientation here at the high school is August 27th. Reminder, there is no school on Monday, September 1st for Labor Day, but school will start for grades one through 12-plus on Tuesday, September 2nd. September 8th is the next Policy and Personnel Subcommittee meeting, as Mr. Storrs just mentioned, that is scheduled for 6:30 PM. The first day of kindergarten is September 10th, 2025. That is also the date of our finance and budget Subcommittee meeting at 6:30 PM. First day of school for preschool is September 11th, and the next full committee meeting, as Mr. Sawyer referenced, is our typical opening report meeting. That is scheduled for Monday, September 15th at 6:30 PM here in the Zito Conference Room. Any questions or comments or additions? Mr. Storrs? Oh, sorry, Ms. Johnson?
I just wanted to add to that, that the Attleboro Back to School Bash will be held on Saturday, August 23rd, and again, just to thank all of our partners in the community for making that happen.
Thank you. It was a quick summer, to say the least. Any other questions, comments, or additions? All right, so next on the, on the agenda is executive session. The Attleboro School Committee will convene an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapters 30A, Sections 20A 2 and 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. Sorry, Section 21A.
Sorry.
2 and 3, nope, thank you, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting might have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted. The school committee will not return to open session following the executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
You're moved.
Second.
Thank you. We will do a roll call vote. Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Frappier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Mr. Geddis?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
All right, so we will convene an executive session momentarily. Thank you very much.